Ellie, turn the call. Is it that minute?
It's not your fault.
The following is the order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We just came out of an executive session and it was legal in personality. Okay. Public comments on agenda items. Please stand and state your name and your address. Yes.
That hurts 504 Rainbow Drive in Dubois. And I see number 18 request for a stop sign at Rainbow Drive and Hillcrest. That would be the corner that's right in front of my house. I've lived there for 48 years. There's never been a wreck. I've never heard anybody screech their brakes. I honestly don't think we need one. We have a perfect view going uphill crest and also downhill crest. I don't see any reason to waste city money, time, or whatever to put on it.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else? Agenda items. Okay. We'll move on then. Recommendation to award bids. Oh, I skipped. Oh, oh, it's the wrong page, man. Approval. Would that be okay? We'll skip ahead. Approval of bid. City Council meeting minutes, March 25th.
Make the motion. We approve council city meeting minutes, March 25, 2024.
Tag it. Properly move in second. Any question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Registry of invoices. Autodraft.
Make a motion to approve the autodrafting amount of $8,626.05.
Second.
Properly move in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Like a five seconds away. General fund.
Motion to approve the general fund in the amount of $220,592.16.
Second. Properly move in second. Question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. T E D E Foundation.
Yeah, it's the Teddy Foundation. We have Val Day with us here today to discuss communication boards in our community, signs in our parks. Val, if you want to go ahead and let them know what you're thinking.
Val Day, 5 Lakeside Avenue with the Teddy Foundation. It's the Teddy Foundation. Thea Jenny A. Jane Carter Foundation. That's the acronym. I have here.
Yep.
Proposal for communication boards in our community. In case you're wondering what that is, it is a sign. It could be any size, but symbols. I'm not sure if anyone needs one, but I can get one. Sure, just give it so you can pass around. All right. I have enough if anybody else needs one. What's one? Basically, what it is, is a sign. And it has symbols for the kids to communicate with families. Or older children. And basically, the Teddy Foundation is just asking permission to provide these for the community with areas that you have authority.
Sorry, I didn't know where to stand.
You're right.
Basically, with areas that you have authority over. And I'm not asking you to cover any of that, but to allow the Teddy Foundation to utilize funding we raise to get these needs met for the community. And it would help reduce a lot of frustration. If you have any children, or you may know of any families, you may see them, they have children that might have a little bit more escalated tantrums. There's a difference between tantrums and a meltdown, in case you didn't know what that is, in medically complex families. I am a medical mom. And you can learn more about us on our website at teddyfoundation.org. Who we are into the community, a non-paid, nonprofit, local organization here in Dubois. And that's what we would like to do, is to provide that for the schools, provide that for the parks, and add an additional one to the park if we can, as soon as we can. That's all that we want to do.
So if you could give us authorization to work with the Teddy Foundation, we'll locate, like she said, she'll take care of the signs, but we'll help her locate where the signs can be so that they can be used in a safe manner and not obstruct anything. The Teddy Foundation has been instrumental in helping us plan for the park that we're, new park equipment we're putting in. The installation is starting tomorrow. She's going to be assisting us with the restroom facility at Geannata Lake as well. So they've been doing a lot of good work with us, and we think these boards would be helpful, but wanted to get council up to speed on what they were doing and authorization to put some of these specifically in the park. But there'll be other places in the community as well.
You want a motion tonight?
If you could, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. We approve the Teddy Foundation for signage.
Second. Properly move in second. Question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll see you at the park and hopefully be able to stop over this week while they're putting it up if it's not raining. But they definitely will be there tomorrow to start.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I get what time? Is there a specific time where we can communicate email?
For the?
To go for the park, so that they go show up.
They're going to be there anytime after 7:00 a.m. tomorrow?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. If I see them, I'll shoot you an email, let you know they're there.
Dubois Public Library update, request for funding.
Yeah. Librarian?
I'm here.
Becky McTavish is here?
Okay. Hi, I'm Becky McTavish. I'm the librarian at the Dubois Public Library. I've been there for 15 years. I have with me Jean Cole, who is a member of our Board of Trustees, along with Jane McGee, who is also a member of our Board of Trustees. And I don't think any of the rest of them came, but. So I just kind of came to give you a status of the library. I know over the years, the 15 years I've been here, I do this occasionally, just to let everybody know that we're still there. We're doing great. I know, so the funny thing is with the Eclipse, we got 3,000 pairs of the Eclipse glasses. They were all gone by 9:15 this morning. Believe me, we got the calls for the entire rest of the day. But, so we're there to do things like that, anything, you know, to support our community. We have over 42,000 items in our collection within the walls of the library. We have another 17,000 eBooks and e-audio books online that people can access through their library cards. I had a lovely little spreadsheet that I was working on, and then all of my formulas went haywire, and I just went, I'm tired of this. I'm not playing with it anymore. But if you'd like it, I can get it back to you, I can get it to you in the future. Since 2019, of course, with COVID and all of those changes, we did have quite a few drops in services. All of our programming fell off, all of our, you know, our daily services changed to virtual services. And I just would like to tell you that now, at the end of the year in 2023, we are officially back to pre-COVID numbers on almost everything. Our computer usage is back up, our program attendance is back up, the amount that we get to spend on books is back up, the funding from the state library is up a little bit, well, from the state, you know, the legislators is up slightly. Funding from city and Sandy is holding steady with what it's been for years and years. And so we just like to take a chance to thank you for continuing to support the Dubois Public Library over the last 104 years now. And to say that we plan, I won't be here for 104 years, but we would love to say that the Dubois Library will continue in whatever form for the next 100 years. We are truly the community's library because the Dubois Public Library was started by the city of Dubois. It was not a group of volunteers, it was not a group of concerned citizens. It was started by fathers and mothers of the city of Dubois in 1920. And we are very happy to say that here in 2024, we are still going strong, and we are still supporting the community. One of the things that we are doing this year is we did obtain a Keystone Grant to replace the air conditioning systems of the Dubois Library. In 2020, during the craziness of COVID, the air conditioning system for the program room died. Of course, because we weren't holding programs and we weren't doing much, in fact, most of us weren't even in the building, things didn't get fixed, we didn't find a way to fix them. And now the rest of the air conditioning units are, you know, they're functioning, but if you walk in the library, you'll hear them in the summertime. I have lots of comments, what is that noise? But, so we have a Keystone Grant to replace all the air conditioning units. The heating units have been replaced more recently, so we're only replacing the air conditioning systems. And so one of the things that I gave that you should have, I think that was distributed, is a letter from the Board of Trustees of the Dubois Library, asking if the city will help us pay for that system. It is a matching grant, and so the matching part of it is $49,000. And so our hope is to have some assistance from the city of Dubois in doing that match to finish providing that air conditioning system for the library. I can answer questions. I, you know, I'm not sure what else, what other information you'd like to know.
So you said the $49,000, that's?
That's the match. That is the match for the grant. So originally, when we wrote the grant, the grant was for $147,600. Once we did the bid process and everything, the lowest bid came in at about 90, I think it was $96,000, $97,000. So it came in under what we anticipated it being. So the matching portion of that from the state funds would be the $49,000.
Mike.
You're welcome.
You do fundraising?
We do some fundraising. We do have donation boxes in the library. We are planning to do some fundraising this year to help meet the rest of the budget for, you know, for staffing, for collections, for all the other operating costs. So we are hoping to figure out some regular annual appeals and that sort of thing. Last year, we did bring in, I think it was about $12,000 in donations for the year. Might have been higher than that.
How many people do you employ?
We employ nine people, four full-time, five part-time. That is down from years past where we had 12 people, but we've made the schedule so that their schedules are a little bit heftier, so it, you know, gives people more time in the life, staff more time in the library. And our janitoress actually does double duty. She works the desk, which she is adoring, but she is also the janitoress. So it technically is 10 separate positions, but one person holds two of them.
Thank you.
And this is, you know, information we're getting from Becky tonight. We can take it back. Sean and I look at that, and you guys can make your decision at the next meeting. Is rule with the rest of the?
Yeah, we have time on that, so. But if you have other questions, don't hesitate to shoot me an email. I'm in and out of the library most weekdays. I'm there. If you have any questions, or you want to stop in and see me, I can tell you, I'll be there tomorrow. But, you know, feel free to stop in and visit and check in with me if you want, you know, if you want any more information, I'm happy to provide it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Redevelopment Authority Cooperation Agreement.
Yeah, a lot of these are, as Pat mentioned at the previous meeting, agenda setting for the next meeting. So we do have the Redevelopment Authority Cooperation Agreement that we distributed last month. We will need to execute that here this month. So if there's any comments, questions, changes, get them to Tom or I, we can get those in there, and we'll have the agreement for approval at the next meeting.
Dubois Days update. Craig's here.
Craig Goll.
Craig, where are you from?
Oh, Dubois.
Okay.
So as you guys should have a copy of, you know, I sent to Chris, I'm assuming, and I won't speak very long, I'm going to keep this really simple, separating mission statements and different things. Basically, what we are here today to ask is for the city to look towards possibly sponsoring fireworks and sound to the amount of $15,000. For Dubois Days, we'd also like the city to allow us, free use of the pool from Friday through Sunday, and also use of the maintenance building, if for no other reason, for a cool down area, so it's shaded, or also outside of the weather, if there were rain or something along those lines. But we also know in years past, alcohol was sold there. We also were going to propose that alcohol could be sold with catering license in that building again this year, with part of the proceeds being donated back to the city as a result of those alcohol sales. And we would hope to fund you for that, and ask that you guys would consider those things.
What other events and stuff do you have planned, some of the plans for Dubois Days? I mean, what do you have?
So for right now, we have quite a laundry list of musicians that are going to play for free, and obviously very heavily discounted costs. We're looking, Imagine Wrestling wants to take part, they've discounted, they cleared it down to $1,800, it's just more a matter of fitting it into their schedule. Normally, they're about $5,000, $500. The YMCA is doing a pickleball tournament, the Bear Hall is doing a large cornhole tournament as well, we're going to put on a boxing show as well. So we have about $20,000 in gloves that was purchased by Indictus, that will be located over toward the YMCA side, over where the football field is over there. So we have quite a few things on the schedule right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll address that at the 22nd?
Yes.
Yeah.
Action regarding the employment status.
Downtown Dubois.
Oh, I'm sorry. Downtown Dubois Incorporated contract update.
Yep, so they provided us a contract at the last meeting. Tom has reviewed it, given some information on that. I will get that to Shirley, and then we will have that for you to vote on at the next meeting as well. Just wanted to give you an update, we are moving along with that. We'll have something in place for voting here at the 22nd meeting.
Action regarding the employment status of Chief Buck.
Tom, did you want to do an update on that?
I'm happy to, if that's council's wishes.
Yes, please.
Okay. There was a complaint received by council regarding the chief. That matter was referred to the district attorney's office. In addition, the allegations were provided to the chief. The chief had an opportunity to respond to the allegations as part of council's investigation. They asked me to look into it. The chief, through his legal counsel, Bill Shaw, declined to answer questions with respect to the allegations. I also conducted interviews of other individuals. I've shared that information with council, and provided council as much information as that I have available regarding the allegations and the status of the matter being referred to the district attorney's office. So at this point, it's a lot that cannot be disclosed because it's a personnel matter, but that's what can be disclosed. So if there's questions regarding the specifics, unfortunately, council's not at liberty to share the specifics of that allegation, of those allegations.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we terminate the employment of Chief Buck as the police chief of the city of Dubois.
My second.
Properly move in second. Any questions on a motion?
I have a question. How can you terminate somebody before they then?
I'm sorry, it's just, the mayor says that he needs a council. The matter's before council for a vote.
Okay.
Sorry.
Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
No.
Augenbach.
No.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Action regarding the employment status of former city manager Supleasie.
I'd like to make the motion that we terminate city manager Supleasie.
Becca.
Properly move in second. Any questions on a motion?
Can I just note, procedurally?
Absolutely.
Procedurally, the former city manager was provided a letter from city council offering him an opportunity to request a hearing before city council. I've been in communications with Mr. Shaw with respect to that offer, which is required under the city code. We have not received a request for a hearing from the former city manager, so he's been provided with the opportunity, has not taken advantage of it, so council can take whatever action they wish with respect to his employment.
Vote on a motion?
Dietz.
No.
Augenbach.
No.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. New business, appointment of municipal solicitor.
Yeah, the proposals were due here April 1st. We did receive two responses. I provided you guys with copies of that. So at the April 22nd meeting, we'll be looking for a recommendation to appoint one of those two as municipal solicitor.
Authorization to hire summer seasonal employees.
Yeah, at that time of year, again, we have a list, I believe it is 20, seasonal summer employees that will work in the garage, the sewer plant, and the water plant. I'd like to have your recommendation to hire those individuals. It's $15 per hour.
Vote on a motion?
I would like to do that today, if you could, yes, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Properly move in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Recommendation to award bids. Yeah, this is an information item as well, that'll be on the March or April 22nd meeting. We have the architect proposals due April 16th, our chemical bids are due April 18th, pavement marking bids are April 18th, and the public works garage heating replacement systems also April 18th. So those will all be on the agenda for the 22nd.
Union Township Municipal Authority Water Agreement.
Yeah, we have an agreement to sell water to Union Township. We were going over that with Union Township about a month ago. There were a couple inconsistencies between the way we do things now and the way it was written up. It won't change the rate calculation, we just want to make the language consistent. So I'll have that for you at the next meeting as well. You have a draft in your packets there, Union Township has already looked at it and agreed with it, so we'll have that for approval.
Planning Commission recommendation?
Are we currently selling them water?
Yes, yes. It's, we've been selling them water since, under this agreement, since 1973.
Okay.
Yep, and it's just to clean up some language.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Planning Commission recommendation to deny conditional use of 11 McClure Street.
Yeah, we had a request to use a garage at 11 McClure Street as a repair facility, inspection facility in a residential district. Planning Commission reviewed that and is recommending to deny that request for conditional use of a garage in a residential district. And if we could, I would like to have that one voted tonight. It is not a permitted use, that's why they denied it.
Make a motion to accept the planning Commission's recommendation to deny conditional use of 11 McClure Street.
Second. Properly move in second. Question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
No.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Downtown Dubois Incorporated event, street closure for downtown street festival on May 11th.
Yeah, downtown street festival, this is information with merchandising, food vendors, and events. I don't know if you have any, think you want to add to that?
Nope.
Nope, just wanted to let everybody know that their first street closure for Long Avenue is going to be May 11th, so keep that on your calendars.
Request for stop signs, Rainbow Drive and Hillcrest Drive.
Yeah, so the system is working. We got a request, but we put it on the agenda, discuss it tonight, and maybe have action at the 22nd if needed. We've had other residents stop in, and also expressed that with the low volume of traffic up there, they don't believe the stop sign is needed. There is good sight distance up there, but I wanted to put it on the agenda here for discussion from the public and from council here.
Unusual, but does anybody at least have any comment on this particular situation?
I'm Jean Paul. I live at 318 Hillcrest. I agree with Bev. I don't see any, I had to think of actually what we were talking about.
In the neighborhood, there's only one stop sign, it's at the top of Hillcrest.
Correct.
So I went up and looked around, and I just thought, if someone brings it to my attention, I'm going to follow through and see what everybody thinks.
Okay, thanks.
Was that a request from the resident in the neighborhood?
There was a resident in the neighborhood, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Request for temporary parking easement at Dr. Doolittle's.
Yeah, Dr. Rice wrote you a letter. He has a temporary need for parking. He is going through a traffic impact study and some development plans with Sandy Township before he can put in his permanent parking. So he needs a temporary parking, which would be to the, if you're entering to the right, he's already using it. As temporary parking, I believe previous administration allowed him to do that. He needs something formally in writing to give him that temporary parking to satisfy the Sandy Township requirements.
Is that our property?
It is our property. Yep.
Does that create any issues with?
It does not. Nope, there's no issues with doing this. We just formally give him the permission to do so.
You want a motion on that?
Yep, we can do that tonight.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Properly move in second. Question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Okay. I'll get a letter out to him for him to sign.
Okay. Public comments.
Val Day, 5 Lakeside Avenue. In case anybody wanted to look at my sample, what I was trying to say for my goal, I have that here available for afterwards, and another example to discuss further details, and just cover that. Another example to discuss further details and just cover that if I can do that.
Yeah, sure. Yes.
If I may, I forgot to add.
State your name.
Oh, Greg Gill, sorry. So any funds raised for Dubois Days, if there are any excess funds after we reconcile at the end, it will all be donated back to the City of Dubois for a public works project of whatever you would choose. Something that would benefit the community. At the end of the day, this is a community event and this is community funds and it should be utilized as such.
Thank you.
So, and we have Jim Says, which accountable keeping, MDG, Perrin and Social Local Office of Dubois out of Pittsburgh, handling all the accounting. There'll be a public report posted online for everyone to review.
Thank you, thank you very much. That's a nice way to do things. Yeah, for sure. Any other public comments? Yes.
Debbie McLean, Monroe Street, Dubois. Without there being any back and forth from the audience, would it be possible to hear a brief statement from each council member of an explanation of their vote for item 11 regarding Mr. Supleseio's termination?
We'll do that on the 21. If somebody wants to comment on it, they will. Okay? Anything else?
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Bob Swob, Dubois.
Say that again, please.
Bob Swob, Dubois. Not to put anything on your mind. I just kind of wanted to speak, I'll say on behalf of the city workers, Patondo. I know it's been brought up every week about, if I'm, this is, whether this week it wasn't. But I just, we just want the public to know that any guy wearing an orange or yellow shirt over there did not receive a penny of that. We get hounded every day, whether we're picking up, you know, something at Ace or we're in the park working. We get hounded every day by some kind of citizen. And we just want to make sure the public in Facebook land is well aware that them people over there, we didn't get anything out of us. And we would appreciate it if the public wouldn't accuse us of that, you know? So that's all I just kind of wanted to say.
Thanks. I hear it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Anybody else, public comments? Chief?
Good.
Zach?
Good to meet you, sir.
Lisa?
No, I just wanted to thank, you have a great library.
Thank you.
I was going to tell you, and we thought you'd do. Good luck with your signs.
Thank you.
It's great to hear that. How wonderful. Thank you.
How the sample moved.
That's great. And I see us in the tax office, it's still taxes and we're still collecting. It's busy, it's getting busy in there with the merger. Things are going really well. It feels really positive. And I just want to thank everybody who's been working on how great it's been, the merger coming together. So thank you all.
David?
I also want to thank you for running such a nice library. I remember when my kids were little, we took them over there all the time. And I actually have parents who do not have computer access. I work at the high school and they go to the library to access their emails that they get from me, so.
Yeah, we do, we have a lot of people still coming back in now. And the statistics that I have, things fell off in 2020 because I think a lot of people went out and bought tablets and all of those sorts of things. But they don't have printing access and they don't have access to this or to that. And so all of that is picking back up where we're there if they need, you know, access to be able to do those things again. And the Wi-Fi is accessible almost 24 hours a day. So as long as they've stopped in, they can use the Wi-Fi.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Kim?
On the, on the library, thank you very much. On the Teddy Foundation thing, yeah, thank you for your letter. You know, I got your, your email there that, you know, you can look stuff up in the teddyfoundation.org. I plan on doing that, just to learn more about it myself. But thank you, I think it's very important. That's all I have.
Thanks to the library. My three grandkids utilized the library in the summer. The Teddy Foundation, she's been in my flower shop. So I've had that nice opportunity to speak to Val before. And I think that's it tonight.
Actually, I watched the eclipse with my grandkids today and I got the glasses at the library, I left the donation for them. Thank you very much, it was very, we had a great time. I'm going to answer your questions about her. I know the reason I voted is several reasons. First of all, the land deal, he was told to buy 27 acres. He bought seven. Council did nothing to him and it went through. That can't be done. What he did to the pension is atrocious and it was very, very self-serving. He was the greatest benefactor of that. The next thing is the bonuses. Absolutely uncalled for. That's why I voted to fire him.
Thank you for responding.
Hello. Thanks for calling me, being on the phone tonight. Observing the eclipse as well. The library, thank you very much for what you all do to serve the community. You provide a vital service now more than ever. So thank you very much and thank you for all the information that you presented tonight. As far as Debbie, your question, I just think it's time to move the city forward. We're not, we're not going back. The wheels of justice are still turning on that case, but we're moving into consolidation. We appointed John Arbog, starting next meeting, as the manager of the city. And I don't see any reason to keep former city manager on as an employee any longer at this time. And for all the reasons Pat said and others, I'll keep myself right now. I just think it's time to let the city move forward. So, thank you.
I have a couple other things too. I want to thank Chris for being our interim manager. He was city engineer and really stepped into a job that we, I know is very hard. And he's helped me through getting me familiar with what's going on and stuff like that. Anything I need, I get from, but Chris, thank you personally. You did a heck of a good job and I'm still going to use you. Still going to contact you. John, would you stand up, please? This is Sean Arbog. Starting next meeting, Sean will be up here sitting where Chris is. And I do a lot of, you'll be talking to me quite a bit. Yes, you will.
Shay?
Yes, Val, thank you for the work that you're doing. Teddy Foundation, that's awesome. Much needed. I also want to thank our police department. I work at a special education school. And the other week, we had a non-student day and some of the officers came in, provided a much-needed emergency operation training for our teachers and staff. Went really well. I believe if I'm not mistaken, some of the officers that came in, they did it on their own time to provide our services to us. So, thank you very much.
What? I want to say something.
Go ahead.
I didn't know if you were going to skip me.
Oh, no.
You went right past me, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Val. Thank you, Greg, and thank you, Shirley. It's been a while, but you had asked about 219 signs on the boulevard.
Yes.
I did reach out to Penda. I forgot to get back to you, so I am talking to them. That didn't go on deaf ears, we're, we're still working on that. So I apologize for not getting back to you all that quickly. Thank you. I did want to address Mr. Swob and the bonuses and not just the bonuses, but the whole thing. I have a lot of great, great coworkers that I think are feeling a lot of heat. As he was saying, for a lot of things that happened, the bonuses, whatever. I hope everybody can appreciate, the majority of everybody is doing the best job possible. Great coworkers in the building, downstairs in the police department and out in public works at the water plant, the sewer plant. So please, take it easy on my coworkers. They are great people doing a good job. So I'll leave that for my party statement before Sean takes over.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Properly moved in second. All in favor?
Deets.